So please stand for a moment of silence.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Ms. Garza.
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer. Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. O'Hanley.
Here.
Mrs. Seabird.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Miss. I think they were supposed to start next week.
Yeah.
The student representative.
And usually we have two student representatives, but school hasn't started yet, so they're not here. And you may notice that one of us is natively attired, actually a couple of us aren't, and the rest of us are not in ties or anything. In the summer, we try to be a little bit more casual, but next time you're here, we'll all be dressed like this guy, so.
Well, not quite that well.
Yeah, no. All right. Well, next I'll be doing a little. Dr. Newman, any additions and corrections to the agenda?
Personnel, ratification of personnel.
Good, good job. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is superintendent's announcements and spotlights. I assume that's Mrs. Stone, Dr. Stone. Okay, I was gonna say Mrs. Radford, but threw me a curveball there. Dr. Stone, welcome.
Thank you. So Chairman Williams, Dr. Newman, members of the board, I am super excited to be here tonight to talk about some professional development that was provided. But my part of the spotlight is actually to talk about Ms. Keegan. So Katie Keegan, as she said, is our supervisor of professional development. She does an amazing job of pulling together professional development for about 1,100 employees. We do a survey, so we have an idea of what staff is looking for. She not only provides professional development to teachers, but also supports staff and others in our division. One of the things we've been focusing on, that we've all talked about, is positive behavioral interventions and supports. So one of the things that Katie worked on, and she'll give you some background about how all of that came to be, was conscious classroom management. So we would like to welcome her this evening to share that with you and just know that we are so appreciative of all the work she put in to get this to our teachers.
Thank you very much. So good evening Chairman Williams, members of the board, Dr. Newman. I'm happy to be here to share some highlights from one of the division-wide professional developments that took place last week. And as Dr. Stone mentioned, it was focused on classroom management. Over the past few years, I've been striving to streamline all of our professional development into these six professional development pathways. These pathways drive the planning process when we're identifying the needs amongst staff. The area of classroom management has been discussed as an area of training, and that really falls within two pathways shown on the screen. Our culture and climate pathway and student and family engagement. About three years ago, there was a need for consistent division-wide training and a resource around classroom management for our new teachers. So for our teacher, education, and mentor program. I reached out to my counterparts in our neighboring school divisions to see what they were using and ultimately decided to go with a resource that provided strategies that could be easily implemented into any classroom and a wide variety of resources that supported the management of a classroom community throughout the year. The resource we decided to go with is called Conscious Classroom Management, and it is written by Rick Smith and Grace Dearborn. As mentors were supporting their mentees, they quickly realized what a valuable resource it was. And I was constantly hearing from experienced teachers about how this training could really benefit teachers and staff of all experience levels. That same feedback continued to come from our administrators as they also became familiar with the resource and the strategies. Several principals shared an interest in having trainings for their staff, so we proposed a division-wide training that all staff could participate in. All of our principals decided that this was the direction they wanted to go in, so about a year ago, we began the process of planning for this division-wide training. Last year's professional development needs assessment asked teachers to identify which areas of classroom management that they would like to take a deeper dive into, and those results were used to tailor the workshop that took place last week to meet their needs. This Conscious Classroom Management book talks about classroom management in three components: foundation, prevention, and intervention. Within each of these components, there are recommendations made for how teachers can implement strategies that support all students. In the foundation phase, they are focused on assuming the best in all of our students and building relationships with them. The prevention phase focuses on enhancing those positive connections with students and families while having solid teaching procedures in place and holding our ground when needed. Once teachers have that foundation set and systems in place, the book explores some interventions that could be utilized when students do not respond to those factors. We utilized Title II funds to purchase a book for every educator in Manassas City, which also gave them access to an online toolbox of a wide variety of resources at their fingertips. Last Thursday and Friday, we had all K-12 instructional staff, including support staff, attend a day-long training with specific focus on the grade levels that they served. At the end of the workshop, we asked participants to identify one to two takeaways from the workshop that they were going to implement, starting at the beginning of the school year. As you can see, there were many strategies that really resonated with those who attended. These are just a handful of the thoughts from the almost 500 surveys that were turned in. As the supervisor of professional learning, I strive to provide learning opportunities for our teachers and staff that meet their needs. I believe that the satisfaction from the large number of educators that not only came to this workshop, but engaged in the activities, truly reflected on their practices, and planned for how they were going to implement their learning immediately, came from the fact that they knew that this was brought to them because they expressed it as a need. You see some quotes that I pulled directly from the surveys, and there were so many more about how this PD was one of the best workshops they had attended, or how it directly met their needs, or that they could not wait to put what they learned into action. I want to thank all of you for trusting me and empowering me to listen to the needs of our staff and for allowing me to bring in opportunities that have the potential to make a large impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
We just moved in a bunch of teachers. They're all on their move-in days, so, and I helped move some people in, and all I got were very, very positive comments about this. The 96%, you know, that's great, when they're filling stuff out, and teachers that started in 1981, oh my goodness. But just when they are not asked about it, when they're not filling out a survey, when they're just walking past you and stop you in the hallway and tell you how great this PD was, that's big, because we don't get that a whole lot on PD days. Believe it or not, some of them aren't the greatest in the world. And I think, from what I've understood and from your presentation here, it obviously was. So congratulations to all you guys for all your work. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Comment?
I particularly like the one comment that says, "Great eye-opening. Teach in a positive, caring way for all students." So that's fantastic. Then you hit clearly every type of student, which is exactly what our goal is up here, so thank you for that.
Katie, one thing I loved was the foundation, and it said, "Assume the best." And I used to work for an executive, and it doesn't matter if we're talking now students or people in the business community. He would start off a lot of things with, "Assume noble intent." And that was his foundation. That was his premise behind a lot of things. So the fact that we're applying that to students, I really think is powerful.
And I'll add, one thing that we often say is that we want to do what's best for our kids. That's what drives us. And in order to do that, we need to do what's best for our teachers and students alike. By empowering our teachers and our educators to be the best they can be, you really enhance the whole learning process. So thank you for that. It's been, we really appreciate it. One thing that got me really on this was, besides, I've heard a lot of comments, positive comments about the training, was I follow Ms. Keegan on Twitter. You can follow her on Twitter, Katie Keegan. And she tweeted something about two-by-ten conversations, which I found fascinating. Would you mind sharing what that is, because I think some of the students may appreciate that as well?
Yeah, so they talk a lot about the power of having two-minute conversations with a student about a topic of their choice for 10 days straight and how that can positively impact your relationship. So not connected to anything school-related. And it can be achieved and talked about if they won't open up, how you could try to just listen in or try to find out their hobbies and just start talking to them about that to build those connections with them. So that was really something that resonated with a lot of the people in the room.
And that's really cool.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you. We appreciate it. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, next on the agenda is board committee reports. Are there any board committee reports? Finance?
Finance.
Okay. Down here, any committee reports? Okay, so before we get to finance, we have an academic committee kind of related issue. I'm gonna let Dr. Newman speak for a moment, and then I'll get to Ms. Staubert.
We had a transportation meeting today to iron out some issues with arrival times at our different schools. And in order to not move the school day back five minutes, which would cause some of our late elementary kids not to leave until after 4:30, we are adjusting the instructional time, start time, at Baldwin Intermediate and Mayfield. So last year, we had to do this, and it ended up being 7:20 to 2:10 for Mayfield, and there was 7:20 to 2:15 for Baldwin. So we're gonna change it to 7:15 to 2:10 for both schools, so they'll have the same amount of time. And it also, it will not affect the times that students are picked up in the morning. The drop-off time will still be 7 o'clock. It also will not change the instructional time for our students as far as anyone getting any less than last year, and it will not change the teacher work hours. After talking to both principals, we are confident that we will still be able to get students in and out of the breakfast line, and everyone will have that opportunity as well. But again, it will not move any of our times back, because if you move Metz back five minutes, you have to move Osborne, and then Osborne will go back to year three. Elementary schools will go into year two final. So this was the easiest way so that all schools will be able to start on time and end on time without disrupting any of the instructional time at any level. Announcements will go out from the principals tomorrow from Mayfield and Baldwin Intermediate.
Any questions or comments about that?
I would assume it's somewhat seamless to parents, because the school bus is coming when the school bus comes.
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Ms. Staubert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a finance meeting last night. I actually wish the mayor and council members were here to hear part of this. First is our budget calendar, and staff will be presenting that later this evening as an output of that meeting. The other item we talked about, and staff gave a great job relative to compensation and marketability within the surrounding area. As the board can recall, two years ago, we took great effort to try to close the gap with our surrounding jurisdictions with respect to our salary schedule. We essentially caught up with Prince William, what I'll say, a year in arrears, because in the budget planning year, we were catching up to the year they were already in. Last year, if we recall, as a city, we did not have a cost of living increase for our teachers. Prince William, who's our nearest direct competitor, has been a lot more, has had a greater ability to do that. The result is, two years after we thought we'd caught back up, on average, we're about 8% behind Prince William again. And that will have the ability to affect, impact our ability to attract and retain teachers. I'm sure it'll be a big item during the budget discussions that will all be very engaged in. It was purely a report last night on what the data is. It was only based on where Prince William is right now, but we know Loudon is higher than Prince William, and Fairfax is higher than them, and keep on going, so where's that put us? So just to prep everybody for some of the difficult decisions and discussions we've got to have, and of course, for the scouts, our three, so we have several sources of revenue. We have local money, state money, and federal money. But overwhelmingly, the state and the federal government expect localities to pay for the cost of local education. That's my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda, board member comments. We'll start with Ms. O'Hanley.
Good evening, everyone, again. And scouts, thank you for coming out. I know this is a great opportunity. I'm sure the boys have lots of questions you might ask later on. And as was said earlier, we all have email addresses. If you have any follow-up questions or anything, please shoot us an email, and we're happy to get right back to you with an answer. I know it's tough to get up and speak in front of everyone or ask a question. Keep my comments short. Since I've spoken enough tonight, I just want to, you know, welcome everyone back to school. I know our teachers have been back a few weeks. Some of us were there when the new teachers reported, and that was very exciting. You know, we're excited about a new year. We have a lot of new staff. I think we have about 80 new teachers, new principal, the high school. We're just very, very excited for a great new year, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your talk earlier. Appreciate it. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, everybody, and definitely welcome, Boy Scouts. It's exciting to see you here. I hope this is somewhat informative, and maybe some of you will be interested in perhaps running for school board or city council one day. I just wanted to say that, remind everybody that there's a lot of back-to-school, open houses and orientations this week. Wednesday, August 14th, tomorrow is tablet handouts at Osborne High School from 10:00 to 6:30. There is a meet and greet, so you can meet the new principal, Mr. Fulgraf, tomorrow as well, between 5:30 and 6:30. Thursday, August 15th, tablet hands out, handout again at Osborne High School from 10:00 to 6:30. Thursday, August 15th, all of the elementary schools, their pre-K and K in kindergartens are having open houses. The pre-K in kindergartens from 4:00 to 5:00, and first and fourth grade is from 5:30 to 7:00, so don't forget that. If you have any questions, definitely check each individual school's website. A lot of information is there. Friday, August 16th, Baldwin Intermediate New Student Orientation is from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. And Mayfield has their open house from 4:00 to 8:00 on Thursday. And Metz Middle New Student Orientation is from 8:30 and 10:30 a.m. on Thursday. So also, I want, I also want, as the school season starts, to remind everybody that there is a school app you can download, and it gives you all kinds of things right there at your fingertips. Emails, notifications from the school. You can go to your Power School, check grades from there. It's just a great resource, and there's so many people who don't know that exists. So I wanted to mention that real quick. And our 2019 convocation was Monday, and our teachers, our assistants, counselors, bus drivers, janitors, music directors, coaches, along with office staff, they are all ready for a new year. And as school begins on Monday, I wanted to share a fun poem, since this is the end of August, end of summer. It is. It's called, "At History, I Am Hopeless." At history, I'm hopeless. At spelling, I stink. In music, I'm useless. From science, I shrink. At art, I'm atrocious. And in sports, I'm a klutz. At reading, I'm rotten. And math makes me nuts. At language, I'm lousy. Computers, I'm cursed. In drama, I'm dreadful. My writing's the worst. There's only one subject I'm sure I would pass, but they don't teach video games in my class. So I thought that'd be cute for you boys. Anyway, that was written by Ken Nesbit. And I just want also to let all the students know that we may not be great at all things, but each and every one of us has a gift. Let's lean on one another to help each other find what those gifts are. I promise, if you listen to your teachers, be respectful, do your work, focus, ask for help, plan your work, work your plan, you will live productive, happy lives. And that's all I have today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you for calling. Next, Ms. Seabird.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been a busy summer, and many of our students and teachers have experienced a very full summer with educational enrichment opportunities. We've had summer school. We've had NEST program for our youngest students. We've had a summer arts symposium and concert for the community. Athletic training throughout the summer, marching band camp, professional development for all our staff. And our school board members get professional development, too. In July, many of us attended the Conference on Education in Richmond. It included workshops and a variety of programming that's been very effective in our Virginia schools. The workshops I attended were on school-wide wellness programs, student engagement in community issues, and workforce readiness. So it's just, it's a great way to get some fresh ideas and perspectives and bring some ideas to our school to use here. I want to welcome everybody back to school, and I hope you have a great year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seabird. And Ms. Di Maria?
Thank you, sir. Couple of things I want to comment on. I'm glad you took me last, or, you know, except for the old guy.
He means the gentleman with lots of wisdom.
Senior guy.
Guy with no hair.
Yeah. Convocation, I wanted, were you gonna talk about convocation?
No.
Okay. All right, then I will. I was there for the first half until the PD started. It was very well done. These gentlemen spoke very eloquently. I do have a problem with the way Dr. Newman spoke. He had a nice speech written up, and I don't know how you make a joke and then make it work when it's written down. And it's not your job to be funny. Know your lane. I got you, boss. But it was very good, but don't be funny. But it was a very entertaining morning. I'm glad I had a slow day at work, so I was able to stay for the whole morning, except for getting out of there. We, it's really nice that our bus drivers are there and everybody is there. And I suggested, I think, to you guys that next year, maybe we have the bus drivers drive their buses and put everybody on them so that we can get out of there quicker. But anyway, next year, I'm just gonna leave early, so it really won't affect me. The Osborne Boosters had a golf tournament a couple of weeks ago. I played with the superintendent. We did not come in last. Yes.
So the superintendent carried you?
No. No. Well, we needed something, none of the four of us carried us. That's why we were happy not to come in last. So, and thank goodness for the Osborne administration. Yes. Proud of them. But it was a great event. Next year, it's right at the beginning of August. If you play golf, if you don't play golf, it's very entertaining getting out there with all the people. And the Williamses, the Mrs. Williams and her husband played. It was great. The marching band had their, what was it?
Preview show.
Preview show. And it was at 4 o'clock, right, on a Friday or Thursday? And it was impressive how many people came out to watch the preview of the marching band, and they're really, really good. And they've got a full season of events coming up, and at a lot of those events, on either side of their demonstration, is a football game. So if you want to come out, the football starts this Thursday, actually, is a scrimmage, and then there's another scrimmage the next Thursday. Then the following Thursday, we're taking a road trip down to Ashland to play Patrick Henry High School. And that's when the season starts. So in, I guess that would just be two weeks from this Thursday. Yes. Will, the season will start. We've also got field hockey. Both these sports, and volleyball starting, but both these sports, the numbers of kids coming out is tremendous, and I'm just thrilled. Both of them have somewhere close to twice as much as they did last year. And that's kids getting involved, our coaches recruiting, our own kids, because we don't do that sort of thing here. We only recruit our kids, and it's just very impressive to see this many boys and girls out playing sports, being active, and improving themselves. I'm gonna mention this for the next two months. The Osborne Alumni Association, which I am a part of, the mayor is a part of, but he left. We have an annual reverse raffle in October. It's a really good time. Bring your friends. I will be getting my tickets for sale next. For one price, you get to go to this event if you want to. Otherwise, you just go to the, you enter the raffle. Grand prize is $10,000. But October 19th, it's all-you-can-eat. It's a, it's an open bar. And it's just a really good time, so. I don't know what Mr. Albrecht's about to say, but I'm gonna say a couple of things on our budget. He's usually the mean one. It's gonna be a tight budget. Very, very, very tight. We have to pay our employees first and foremost. At convocation, I was given the opportunity to speak about that and how important those people are. They are the most important people in the city. The people that educate our children, our employees. And that's gonna be first and foremost in this school board's budget efforts, is to make sure that happens. But there's only so much money. And if we don't get the funding we need from the state and the federal government, and mostly the city government, there is a good chance that things that are not SOQs, which are not required by the state, will have to be cut. We don't want to do that sort of thing, because we feel that everything that's in our budget this current year, this budget that's already been funded, is absolutely necessary. Absolutely necessary for the education for our kids. These over 100 kids coming out for just football and field hockey. If we had to cut that sort of thing, where would those 100 kids be all summer long, all fall long? If they're not out in the field with our coaches. Bus routes may have to be extended. Bussing is very expensive to get our kids to school. We can have kids walk up to a mile and a half to school. It's a long ways. We wouldn't want to do it, but if you don't have the money to run the buses, you have to do something. Fine arts. The vast majority, not all, but the vast majority of our fine arts are cuttable according to the state. And if we don't have the funds for them, those sort of things have to be looked at. I'm not saying any of them are going to be cut, but they will be looked at. Everything will be looked at if the funding is not adequate. So on that good note, I'm going to finish. But be assured that this school board's gonna do everything we can to fund everything that's necessary to a point. There are some things that we have right now that are unfunded things that we feel we should have, that we already don't have, and we don't want to add to that list. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Laura's yours, Ms. Staubert.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me follow up, I think, with Mr. Di Maria's point on the budget, because last year, in my 18 years on the board, was the first year that we entered the budget session, entered the school year without a bilateral funding agreement. Some people call it the revenue-sharing agreement. Call it whatever you want to call it. But it was a document that gave a level of assurance to both the local appropriating body, or city council, and the school board with respect to the fiscal solvency and stability we had. If you followed the local government last year, we had a whole lot of meetings and accomplished nothing. We've definitely learned from the people of Washington, D.C. I worry about this year's budget for exactly the reasons Mr. Di Maria just said. We know we're behind with respect to our teacher salaries and the compensation schedule. Everything we have goes up at a disproportionate rate to inflation, whether it's the price of utilities and gas and buying buses and school capacities, because we keep building houses and more children come, and that's bricks and mortar, and that means we have to put additions on or build new buildings, and that's debt service, and that's construction cost. And that's just so you can then begin that process. It's going to be a very, very difficult year. It's one, for the scouts especially, understanding the governance. In the Commonwealth of Virginia, school boards do not have taxation authority. Only the local appropriating body has that authority, and that's by the Code of Virginia and the Constitution of Virginia. That means a city council or a county board of supervisors. Not even, so not even a town council has taxation authority, because towns are general. because towns are generally in part of a greater county. Only city council controls that decision. Our only then ability, because unlike the federal government, we can't operate and we will not operate at a deficit. The only thing then we can do is if there is insufficient revenue from the state, federal, and local government, is to make decisions on programs, on academics, on things that may not be in the best interest of children, but they're the decisions we have to make. That was really somber, and I apologize for that download. So let's go back to, back to school because everybody was really upbeat about that. The enthusiasm, it's a brand-new school year. That is fantastic. I really hope that continues through the year. And again, to the scouts, thank you for being here. I know I don't have to tell you about service. You've come to learn about governance. That's a piece of service. I appreciate everything you do. Keep giving back to the community. Everything you're learning as a scout's important. It's what's going to help our nation continue the way we are. And as far as the specific reason you're here, your education doesn't stop when you get your high school diploma or when you graduate college. Look at your troop leaders. It's lifelong learning. And just always remember that, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I'll just briefly mention, I mentioned before, we talked to the scouts, for those of you watching, thousands and watching on the internet. Ms. Kiefer, Vice Chairman Kiefer, who organized this with Troop 670 couldn't be here because her father-in-law is in the hospital. So she apologized for not being here tonight. But she asked me to shout out Mr. Will Sedmack, who's a troop master and a good friend, and who does a great job with the troop, and also to call out Adam Marchant, who's a patrol leader and a senior at Osborne High School. So if you two gentlemen could stand up. And just thank you for being, and thank you all for being here, but she wanted me to mention you two especially. I think she probably wanted me to mention everybody, but I couldn't because it'd take too long. But thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Thank you all for engaging. Thank you for your service. If you have any questions of us at all, please let us know. I know Mr. Smith is still back here. He's a new city council person, so if you have questions of him, you know, I'm sure he'd be happy, happy to answer them. And with that, we'll move on to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens here who would like to make a comment? Seeing none this evening. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the City of Manassas adopting consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. O'Hanlon, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have at 6-0. The consent agenda is approved. Next up, discussion agenda. We'll start with finance and operations, the draft 2021 budget development calendar. Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening, school board members. Superintendent, in front of you is what we've shown to the Finance Committee meeting last night is our draft budget calendar for fiscal year 2021, this next school year. And it's very similar to what we've had in the past. So we would like for you to just put this on the record and look for it. We will bring it back up for action item at the next school board meeting. It's just very similar to others. We do have some to-be-determined dates down, but those dates are decided when the, when the school board reorganizes in January. They set the dates again for when we will have school board meetings. So that's the reason why we have TBD dates down there.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions about that?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. D'Maria. Yes, sir. Was our date changed that we discussed?
That was for the Finance Committee.
It was, right. Never mind that.
Thank you for clarifying so quickly and making me look silly.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Next item, actually, is the stop-arm camera system.
So the school board, about two and a half years ago, we initiated a stop-arm camera system in the, in the City of Manassas. Basically, what we found were we had significant amounts of citizens passing stop-school buses, loading and unloading children with the lights flashing. And so the school board decided that we needed to do something about that. And so we have taken some action, and we'll show you tonight the results that we've had for the last two and a half years. So over that period of time, we've had almost 4,000 citations that have been written during that time. A little over, almost 3,100 of those, or 77% of them have been paid. These are some of the shocking numbers to me. On average, our buses are passed. Our fleet of buses, at least eight buses are passed every single day with loading and unloading children. On average, our citations per bus are 19 per year, which seems like a lot to me, but it's way down from where it was before when we first started, when it was at 63. We've down 63% from where we started from just two and a half years ago. So I want to see if I can show you this data. Alva, can you, is it possible to make this a little bigger? But, so I want to show you some of the data that we have out there. So in, you know, I went month by month for the last two and a half years. To the far right, you'll see August, September, October, November, December, 2019. Those, of course, we haven't gotten to those dates yet. Those are just the average based on the prior two years. But you can see that we, after, after the first year, in January in 2018, we've had significant decline. We've reduced the number of citations issued by approximately a third during that period of time. Some months it was 60%, 40%. You know, you can see some different big changes throughout there. But if you can scroll over a little bit more, Alva, to the, show them January, 2019. Well, you can see that now we seem sort of more of an uptick coming back in, where we were from 1702 total. We were down to 1165, about 31%, 32% reduction. And this year, we're on track, I mean, to be back up to where we were before. So it's a little disappointing with where we've gone so far this year. But we're going to continue with our public communications campaign, letting people know about this, and continue to work with our partners, with the city, in trying to eliminate or reduce, significantly reduce the number of citizens who are passing the stop-school buses. We put up signs throughout the community, allowed, in areas, letting the people know to please stop for school buses. If you, if we go to the next slide, Alva. Some of the areas of concern that we've had over the years, you can see where we've made significant improvement in some of our more problem areas. So, you know, when I, when we go back and look at the areas where the most citations have been written, you can see that we've made a significant impact in those areas, from 459 to 270 projected for 2019. You know, we've made some significant reductions in those areas. So we have some positive results to report. Not to say that we're where we want to be. We're certainly not. But we have, and we have a long way to go, but we have made progress with this program. Is that, or are there any questions, concerns, comments you'd like to make about the stop-arm cameras?
Mr. Albrecht.
So, I know the board knows this, but there's a whole lot of new people in the audience. This, this is not about the money and the citations. This is at the root of it, student safety. Nationwide, this is a problem. I previously sat on the Board of Directors for a school insurance corporation. And across the Commonwealth and across the nation, the liability, the payouts from people flagrantly violating the stop-arm, hitting children, and for lack of a better way to put it, the death and destruction that causes. This is really about enhancing public awareness and making sure people know what the law is. The law is to stop.
Comments? Yeah, I'm a little disappointed that people have regressed a little bit. And going back to Mr. Albrecht's comments, we want it to be zero. We want to make zero money on this. And so it's rather disappointing that people have started to pass them again. I can't imagine why, with all of the advertisement we've done, and maybe they're just new people coming through, and next, next year, they're going to slow back down, I hope. I'm not sure what else to do other than do, I don't know, chase them down. I don't know. It's mind-boggling.
And one thing that occurred to me was that, I think I saw a statistic where it said something like, in the community, 80% of the folks living in the community don't have kids in schools. So I'm assuming that most of these people getting tickets aren't involved with the school system. Is there any way that the company we work with can benchmark, maybe in other jurisdictions, how to get the message out, maybe going through the city council, the board of supervisors, just some other way that we could communicate it? Because I'm glad we have this, because before we had this, obviously, it was a bigger problem. But I want to do the other things that we could get from the folks who do this, you know, nationwide.
I'll reach out to them. And I think, you know, I think you're right. It'd be better, it'd be better quality information for the school board and for the community to show how we stand with other jurisdictions. I mean, are we an anomaly, or are we just average? Or maybe we're below average. We can show some statistics throughout the nation. But also, we do need to tap the resources that are out there to maybe better communicate this to our citizenry, to help reduce the citations that are being issued.
Right, because as mentioned earlier, the bottom line is we want it to be zero. But thank you for doing this and staying up on this and keeping us informed, because this is very, very, very important. So we appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Mr. O'Hanlon?
Just one, as far as getting the word out. I know the city managers, I was looking for articles for the monthly newsletter he puts in with the utilities, maybe kind of a summary of this along with a reminder. And I know a lot of the people are just passing through the city who don't stop. They're all on Route 28 there. But still, if we get our citizens to know, that would be a good start.
Right. Good point. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
One more item about awareness, because I think that is, is truly the most important goal, is trying to make all aware. And I heard Mr. Hawkins on WTOP in reference to the subject. So hopefully, a lot of our surrounding districts heard that spot as well. Because it was, you represented us well, and I think you shared the importance of this program.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Ms. Hawkins. The next item, I guess, is utilities update.
So a couple of years ago, it was a goal for the superintendent, by the school board, for us to have a energy management program. And we've embraced that idea, and I wanted to give you some updates about where we are with our, with our utilities division-wide. It won't move. I'm sorry. So the energy, I think it was last month, maybe the month before, we had an update about the energy performance contract that was implemented for the, for the school system. And it was, it was, the completion date was May 31st of this year. That, along with that energy performance contract, along with our efforts that we have made within our own school division, we have seen significant reductions in our utilities to date. And we will continue to see significant decreases going forward, even more than what we have. I think these costs are half of what we're going to see for the upcoming year. I expect our energy savings for next year to be roughly $500,000. And I'm showing $211,000 this time. I believe that it will at least double in the upcoming year. But you can see that we've made significant progress. We've reduced our water and sewage usage by 25%, 26%, where electrical usage is down at 20%. We spent the summer this year replacing all the lighting at Dean Elementary School. It was one of our schools that had not been fully implemented with it. And so we expect significant reductions in the utility bills at Dean going forward. The one area of concern that we have is with our natural gas usage. That's primarily due to efforts to, natural gas usage that was at the high school. We're still, we had, in December of this past year, we had a spike in the use of natural gas at the high school. And we're still, we're still investigating it with the natural gas company and with Johnson Controls. At that time, they were replacing all of the units on top of the building over at Osborne. And at the same time, the natural gas company was, changed out the meter at that time as well. So each one of them are pointing the finger at each other right now, and we're still arguing about it. So, but we will, we'll get to the bottom of that in the, in the coming weeks. But, and also, we're going to be watching Osborne closely this fall, and especially during the month of December this year, to track our natural gas usage over there. We don't have, I want to make sure everybody understands, we've been through that building a dozen times. We don't have any leaks. It's no danger. Everything is, is working as it should be over at Osborne. So, and all of our schools for that matter. But, so we've made significant progress on the utilities, and we're looking forward to making even more. So let's go back one more, I think I got one more slide to just show you how, what effects we, this amount of savings has done for our corporate footprint on this community. You can see that, you know, we avoided over, almost over, over 100,000 gallons of gasoline being consumed. You know, more, enough CO2 emissions for 165 homes. You know, you know, these are a significant amount of environmental impacts that the schools division can lead the way for this community. And we're going to be continuing on. We're going to be meeting with our bus manufacturer within the next couple of months, and where we will be looking at purchasing electric school buses in the coming future. So it's not only continuing with our utility bills with the schools as far as our environmental carbon footprint, but we're also looking at our school buses as well. We've explored having solar power in some of our schools. So we're still, we're always on the cutting edge, looking for ways to help not only reduce the cost to the school division and being as efficient as possible on, on the non-instructional side, but to also be able to keep the, our community and our environment in the forefront as well. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments?
Comments?
Yes.
Ms. D'Maria?
That's, I hope you all realize how impressive that is. 25% down on sewage and on electric, and it's, it's just huge. The cost savings is secondary, sort of like stop-arm cameras. The most important thing is to protect our children. The, on this stuff, to me, the most impressive thing is that we're trying to save our planet while saving money. It's a win-win, and I really appreciate the efforts you're putting in. And I hope you guys make your mom and dad do it at home, too. Thank you, sir.
And I was going to add, besides the point you made, that money that you're saving can go back into helping our students be the best they can be because we can use it for instructional purposes. So thank you for your efforts. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the action agenda, new business. The first item of new business is Regional Vice Chair Candidate for Virginia School Board Association Northeast Regional Office. And I believe we need a motion for that.
Well, the computers aren't working, so.
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve Mrs. Suzanne Seberg as a candidate for the Regional Vice Chair for VSBA Northeast Regional Office.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. O'Hanlon, that the school board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve Ms. Suzanne Seberg as a candidate for the Regional Vice Chair for VSBA Northeast Regional Office as president. Are there any, was there any discussion?
As the head of the nominating committee, I am absolutely pleased.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for following in Mr. Albrecht's footsteps. Hopefully, you don't get quite as deep as he does. We could use you here more. Mr. Albrecht is very involved. He's been president of the VSBA. And now Suzanne's stepping up to represent us and the region. This is not just us. This is the region. It's very impressive. Sometimes when we have a vote on budget and stuff like this, Mr. Albrecht and I express that we have family members that work for the system and that we want everybody to be aware of that. I want you to vote on this, but that it being you is not hindering your vote, correct?
No.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure, because she asked if she can vote on this, and I think she should, she should vote on it.
We know from past experience, you have to vote on it.
Okay.
Oh, she does?
Oh, that's right. It must be unanimous.
You cannot abstain. It must be unanimous.
Hopefully, it will be.
Well, I was thinking.
So, well, given that backdrop for the motion table from Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. O'Hanlon, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. I guess, I guess it's unanimous. Eyes have it six-zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Seberg, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next item is the resolution for the 2019 Virginia School Boards Association Media Honor Roll.
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve resolution R. 2019-04, 2019 Virginia School Board Association Media Honor Roll as presented.
Anybody want to read it?
Anybody want to read it?
You have.
Mr. Hanlon, go for it.
All right. 2019 Virginia School Boards Association Media Honor Roll. Whereas in each community, the public schools are shaped by the community providing the most appropriate and effective education for the schoolchildren who attend those schools. And whereas public schools are dependent on the community's support in countless ways, including support in setting goals for the education of our children, in establishing a successful volunteer and booster programs at the schools, for annual funding of operations, in periodic bond elections, in the election of qualified school board members. And whereas, much of the community's knowledge and opinions about the public schools rely on responsible reporting by local media representatives who decide which news to share with the community, how much attention will be focused on various issues, and what the tone of the reporting will be. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the city of Manassas place the name of Stephanie Williams, executive producer and creator of Panorama Latino TV show, on the statewide VSBA Media Honor Roll, calling attention on the ongoing responsible and exemplary nature of reporting on this community's public schools. We express our appreciation for your balanced and accurate approach to sharing with this community both the challenges facing our schools and the successes achieved by the teachers and students. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for the children who attend.
Thank you, sir. So I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht and second by Mrs. Williams at the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve resolution R. 2019-04, 2019 Virginia School Boards Association Media Honor Roll as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it six-zero. And just so you all know, Dr. Newman here is not allowed to vote, because he sits, you know, some folks were looking at him like, why am I not voting? So that's why he's not voting, not because he doesn't care, but as superintendent, he can't vote. But he's here to keep us straight and give us information, just so you know. Keep that straight. Good point. And thank you, Mr. O'Hanlon, for reading that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Bradburg, for being willing to, to jump in. Next on the agenda, student achievement, the pre-K resource adoption. Dr. Saunders.
So, good evening. At our last board meeting, Ms. Batista, our pre-K coordinator, presented to all of you the, the pre-K curriculum and resource request for adoption for the coming school year. And so I'm here tonight to ask for your action on that.
Thank you.
I think there's an action item.
Can we have it?
We don't, we don't have it. We don't have it.
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the city of Manassas approve the pre-K curriculum adoption as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by, uh, Ms. Seberg, that the school board of Manassas approve the pre-K resource adoption as presented. All in favor? Or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it six-zero. Great job. Dr. Saunders, you guys just, quickly. Appreciate that. Thank you. All right. And that is the last item on our agenda. We have a closed session. So again, thank you all for being here and for your patience. We appreciate your engagement. Makes us, makes me feel proud, makes us feel proud to know that you're so engaged in our community. If you have any questions, please let us know. And thank you. Again, we appreciate it. And with that, we have a, yes?
I move that the school board of the city of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purposes: Discussion of Personnel Matters, PERS 1819-1551, PERS 1920-0081, PERS 1920-0002, and PERS 1920-003.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Di Maria, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemption from open meetings allowed, Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purposes: Discussion of Personnel Matters, PERS 1819-1551, PERS 1920-0081, PERS 1920-0002, and PERS 1920-0003. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it six-zero. We are entering closed session.
Thank you all.